Good evening. I'd like to call to order the January 29, 2014, meeting of the Milton School Committee. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. School Committee Woman Becky Padera is at a Glover meeting tonight and will be joining us later. Do we have any additions or corrections or changes, deletions, to the tonight's agenda? Ms. Gormly?
Just a recognition of some of our students, which I'll do right after your done.
Sure.
The FY '15 fees, I believe Assistant Superintendent Pavlicek's looking for a vote on the full-day kindergarten at the recommendation of the Finance Subcommittee.
So, under Finance Subcommittee.
Yeah. Fifteen fees are only full-day kindergarten fees. That's the only fees tonight.
Okay.
And it should say vote. And I had spoken with Chairman Sheridan and Vice Chairman Walker that I was going to meet with Mr. Walker on my mid-cycle review. I got from Mr. Mike Lynch the DVD of the meeting, and I think it might be more effective if I sit down in a meeting, go over the edits and the issues that the school committee had, and then report out after that meeting. So I would ask you to move that.
So removing that from the chairman's report. Anything else?
The technology report. Were you going to speak to, I believe in the packet, that the technology report plan has been changed from the state, but we'll address that when we get there.
Okay. Perfect. Nothing else? We'll accept the agenda as written. Do we have any members for citizen speak?
We do.
Great.
And we also have our student rep.
Okay.
Hi, ladies. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Rachel Shuey, and this is my co-chair Sheila Letty, and we are cheering this year. We wanted to take this opportunity to share Milton Foundation for Education's that the annual celebration for education will be held on April 12, 2014, at the Quincy Marriott. We are really excited to build on last year's focus on digital learning and technology in the classroom. Funds from last year's event are being deployed this year to test and pilot a range of devices in the classrooms, from iPads to Chromebooks. The administration is focused on understanding how different technologies can be used most effectively, and then to focus on...
Speaking of technology...
On cue?
Scaling up what works and doesn't.
I need to have the school committee do this.
The Milton Foundation for Education is thrilled to be able to support these efforts, and funds raised from this year's celebration will do just that. Invitations for the event will be going out at the end of February. In the meantime, our auction committee is busy putting together some excellent packages, and of course, we have sponsorship opportunities available. We are grateful to both Curry College and Beth Israel Deaconess Hospital for their commitment to this event as sponsors, and we are thrilled with the support we have received from other local businesses and individuals. If anyone is interested in sponsoring the event or sponsorship opportunities or supporting the event in any other way, please feel free to contact us.
And we do that by mfe.org.
You can look at the MFE website. And the email address is, we have more than one. It's... You can also email me, sheilaletty@sheilaletty.comcast.net. If you have any trouble, I'm sure Ms. Gormly could put you in touch with us. Any ideas that people have for the event, sponsorship opportunities, obviously, we welcome the opportunity to work with businesses, individuals, and we thank you for all your support.
So exciting.
So, I just want to say publicly that on the miltonps.org website, there's a link to the MFE website if folks at home are watching and want to...
Super.
Great.
Thank you. And so, if I might, the school partners with the MFE and the celebration shares, and the enthusiasm is really high. Lots of people are talking, the staff's looking forward. John Phelan's working cooperatively on the technology, the digital plan. We are very, very excited, so we're here to work with you, and we can't wait.
Great. Thank you.
And to Courtney.
Yes.
Yes. We do, we have one more co-chair who's not able to come tonight, my sister Courtney Oppenado.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
This one?
Yes. So, this year, me, Tanzie Masagreen and myself will be holding the Second Annual Milton Mini Relay for Life. It'll be held Saturday, May 17, on Brooksfield. And some history behind the event. Relay for Life started in 1985 by Dr. Gordy Klatt. He walked around a track for 24 hours straight and raised $27,000 in his first relay. Now there are over 5,000 relays nationwide. Last year, Leona Massey-Green decided to start a relay at Milton High, and we raised almost $20,000 for our first relay. And I come to school committee to talk about a community leader lap and getting out the information for relay. A community leader lap would include all leaders of the community and people that play roles of leadership to come, support the relay, and then walk a lap in symbolism that all the community leaders are there to fight cancer. And to spread word, the event again is 2:00 to 9:00 p.m., May 17. And then everyone on the school committee has received the contact info. The chair, the two chairs are Tanzie Masagreen and myself. My email is mattmccarthy216@gmail.com. Tanzie Masagreen's email is tanzania@comcast.net. And then our faculty advisor Nancy Warren's email is unwarn@miltonps.org. Our other faculty advisor Bridget Canty's email is bcanty@miltonps.org. And our fundraising chair Kevin Conway is conwaykevin33@gmail.com. You can sign up for the event at relaiforlife.org/miltonma. All proceeds for the event go straight to cancer research, and that's about it.
Very proud of you. Thank you. Yeah, that's awesome that you're taking the lead on that where you continue to make us proud as your head of school committee reps, and thank you for stepping up and doing that. I like the addition this year of the community piece, so, thanks. Mr. Walker, you have something you'd like to say?
I do. So, continuing our tradition of recognizing excellence wherever we see it, we had five students who were named Patriot Ledger All-Skullastic, and that is a very big deal. If you think about, the Patriot Ledger covers all of the South Shore. These are students that were identified as the best in their sports, and they were Colin McCabe in golf, Sophie Chase in field hockey, Mairead Dambrook in girls' cross-country, Colette O'Leary in girls' cross-country, and Zach Mazzarella in football. So congratulations to all of those who have achieved the highest level of achievement possible on the South Shore.
Great. Thank you. So, no one further for citizen speak? Great. We'll move into approval of the minutes of the December 4, 2013, school committee meeting. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Mr. Walker, seconded by Ms. Bagley Jones. And is there other any additions or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. Ms. Gormly, we'd love to hear your superintendent's report.
Thank you, Chairman Sheridan. I'd like to ask up Dr. Karen Spalding and the PS Middle School Site Council. Would you join us at the table? I'm going to leave Dr. Spalding to make the introductions. Perhaps you want to put that other mic back so that they can pass one down. Welcome.
We are delighted to be here. This is the, almost all of the site council from the Pierce Middle School, and we thought we'd begin our presentation with a video that will give you an eye, and just in case you haven't been to the Pierce Middle School in a little while, we thought we'd bring a little Pierce Middle School with us, so we're going to begin with that, and then we will move on to our presentation.
We're doing this thing where we use the light and seeing how it travels from where the light starts and where it ends. It goes towards an opaque object, it stops there, and I like to put these things over and go through.
You're living here. Does it grab your attention? Like, right away, you're pretty much thrown into the water.
Can you shut that?
Let's critique this a little bit. It falls, we think, right? We're just going to do, you know, I was going to add this and keep adding water. Do we have the same issue with the other?
Right here, right here, we're constructing better ones on...
Makes it more challenging to figure these out, what your weaknesses and your strengths. Gives us recommendations, and we can do that every day, because there's so many contacts and aims that we need to work on or addressing, and it just helps us get better.
We have a new project to, and we're designing a product that'll be like, cool, because we're going to have people on posters, and we're going to invest like, in our sauce and products.
Karen, did you do the video?
I did.
You were the camera?
Yes.
That needs to be lifted up.
I have to be in classroom.
So we'll put that on our website, just in case you want to watch it again, or if you missed any of the pieces. So we are delighted to be here, and again, this is most of our site council from the Pierce Middle School. I will put the names up here. Each of us will say a little something, so I think instead of passing the mic when that person is speaking, they can introduce themselves. But delighted to have all of these folks here. Not with us this evening, because she was double-booked as well, is Mrs. Amy Flanagan, who very much wanted to be here, but she's at another meeting going on, eighth-grade social planning meeting at the Pierce Middle School, as well as Mrs. Murphy, one of our community representatives. And I'm going to hand the mic over to Mrs. Najarian.
Okay, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Gillian Najarian. I'm the parent of a eighth grader at, I'm sorry, of a seventh grader at Pierce and a 10th grader at the high school. Before putting proverbial pen to paper to create tonight's presentation, Dr. Spalding invited the school committee, the site council, to think about what approach we wanted to take for tonight's presentation. So we asked ourselves, how can we go beyond simply reporting facts? And how can we tell an engaging story about the Pierce Middle School? In other words, we didn't want the presentation to focus just on the what, but we really wanted to focus on the so what of the school. So we decided to take a case approach, and we're going to be highlighting stories of the work that we're doing that stems from the data, but that paints the picture of Pierce as a self-reflective, innovating organization that's working really hard to achieve a high-quality, vibrant academic environment to support and foster the best in all of our students. So for tonight's presentation, we're going to begin with Dr. Spalding presenting an overview of the schooling by design process, and then we're going to give some key highlights of the 2013 MCAS data, but we're not going to do a deep dive since you got a deeper presentation about that back in November. But the data that we will choose to present to you will set the foundation for talking about our school improvement plan for moving forward in the year. So, thank you, and we'll answer questions at the end.
So, the framework that we're using at the Pierce Middle School to really frame our curriculum development, professional development, work-in-assessment, is schooling by design, and we won't go into that in super detail, but we'll just give sort of a brief introduction to it because it does really hold together all of the work that we are doing over at the Pierce Middle School. And schooling by design is based on a backwards design model that instead of planning and doing and doing and doing, you stop and think about where it is you want to be. And for us, that's where do we want our students to be? What kind of students do we want them to be? What kind of learners? What kind of thinkers? By the time they walk out of the Pierce Middle School and head up here to the high school, as well as adults out in the working world, out in college, whatever the case may be. And so, we figure out what that is first, and then we work backwards and say, well, if that's true, if we really believe in those things, what do we need to do at the Pierce Middle School to get them there? And so the first step in the schooling by design process is to take a look at one's mission statement. So we sought to do that and realized we didn't have one, and so part of the process this year, and I'll hand the mic over to Mr. Moonen, was coming up with one and brainstorming one, and it's definitely in draft version. We have lots of other things to do with it, but we wanted to first say, well, what is it that we hope as a community? Teachers, parents, community, students, what do we hope for them? And that's the process that we embarked on, starting back in August.
Hi, my name is Jim Moonen, and I'm a sixth-grade math teacher at Pierce Middle School. I'm going to talk about the mission statement and how the mission statement came to where it is today. The key to lasting change, I'm going to talk about that first. It's a powerful vision in relation to mission-worthy, rich, valued, specific images of our aim, credible, timely, and useful information about how we are doing against our goals, constant feedback, and owning the gap, acting on the discrepancy between vision and reality. The mission statement's on the left, and I'll get into that shortly, but the process of how the mission statement came to fruition was, it's been fun to be a part of. It started on the very first day that we came to school in our professional development in August, and Dr. Spalding asked, you know, us ideas. What did we hope for our students when they finished Pierce Middle School? What did we want our students to, you know, where do we want our students to be? So it started off by, you know, just putting those ideas on large white pieces of paper, and, you know, it's developed into a clear and concise paragraph. After we put those ideas on, you know, pieces of paper in August, the schooling by design teacher-leader group took those ideas and distilled it down to one paragraph. In December, we had a department meeting, and we looked at the paragraph that the schooling by design committee put together, and we gave feedback, and, you know, it went back to the schooling by design committee. The site council in our January meeting also took a look at it, and we gave feedback, and we were part of an email exchange, and we were bouncing ideas back and forth about what we thought could be done to the mission statement. Finally, after feedback from our staff and site council, it went back to the schooling by design committee, and, you know, we have this mission statement. "The purpose of the Pierce Middle School is to develop in students the creativity, independent thought, problem-solving skills, resiliency, appreciation for diversity, and collaborative nature necessary to be positive contributors to society. We are committed to fostering a genuine sense of curiosity and joy in learning that will persist well beyond their middle school years, and strength of character and integrity that will guide them to make positive and healthy decisions for themselves and others." So it was, you know, it's been a long process, and, you know, the next step is to get it out to, you know, the community and parents in the town of Milton.
And it's changed a couple more times since that PowerPoint slide as well, so we are getting as much feedback as we can so that it truly represents what we're all about. So, and mission statements, good ones, remain in draft form for years as well, because hopefully organizations are reviewing them. And so the work ahead for us is then to say, so if that's what we're all about, what are we doing in terms of curriculum? Are we structuring the day? Are we structuring the learning for students in a way that really holds true to what we believe, the kinds of experiences that we want for students? And so the work that we have been doing this year and will continue next year and the year after is all linked to that ideal, which is why it's so important for us to take so much time to really articulate and say out loud what it is we're all about. And so the work that's going on, that you'll hear some about throughout this presentation, is again, all linked back to those important things that, those things that we hold important, rather, for students. So these next couple of slides you've seen before. You saw in the November 6, I believe, presentation regarding that, the data that was presented by each of the principals. And so because we pride ourselves, both as a site council, but as well as the school as a whole, on really thinking carefully about data and making decisions based on data, we thought that that would be a good starting point, just a quick refresher of some of the things that we observed in the data.
Hi, I'm Sarah Polia. I teach eighth-grade math at Pierce Middle School. And just a couple of the great things that we did last year, so 85% of all students were proficient or advanced in ELA, so they did great. Eighth-grade math, the median SGP was 62 for the aggregate and the low-income and African-American subgroups, so that was great. We were really excited about that. And then sixth grade did awesome in both ELA and math, 86% or better than 86% of other sixth graders in the LA, and 89% better than other sixth grades in math. And then the eighth grade performed better than 78% of other eighth graders in Massachusetts, which we were really excited about.
So those are certainly good news stories in the data, and we also reflected on those areas that we really wanted to improve upon and address. And so some of the things that we noticed in the data was that over time, although our students, there were many students who were proficient and advanced in ELA and math, that over time, that it seemed kind of flat in terms of those numbers. We also noticed concerns in terms of the science, technology, and engineering scores when we compared our students, how they were performing in math and English Language Arts compared to how they were performing in science, technology, and engineering. We also looked at cohort data to say, what does it look like for a group of students coming into the Pierce Middle School and moving up through the eighth grade? And then certainly also looked by subgroup, and absolutely observed an achievement gap among, between students in the low-income subgroup, African-American subgroup, special education subgroup, and their counterparts. And then in some cases, both of those groups were making some growth over time, but that there was a gap between them. And so those were the observations, those are the general observations. The more detailed data, of course, is in that presentation, but those are the observations that really drive the work that we are doing, that you'll hear about in the next few slides. So I'm not going to read this whole slide to you, but just highlight a couple of things in particular that we are very excited about. We did receive a professional practice innovation grant from the Department of Education for $29,000, and we were one of six chosen from 60 applicants in the state. And the purpose of the, this innovation grant is to really deep, to dive deeply into curriculum and assessment with teachers in a collaborative way, really fostering teacher leadership, and that's what our work around the schooling by design and backwards by design process has been all about, and gives us opportunity also to then share that work with other districts in the Commonwealth. So it's doing the work in our own district to improve the initiatives that we have, but then also sharing that with other districts, both through publication via the Department of Education website, as well as through these sort of Share-A-Thon conferences that they have. There's two initiatives up there that are new this year. There are some that we also had last year, but two in particular that we'd like to highlight, and one is the Pierce Academy. So we have tried a number of ways to support students who do not achieve as high as we hoped. We've tried after-school initiatives, we've tried Saturday initiatives, we've tried extra math classes, we've tried support classes, and realized that there is a group of students where if they could have an extended day, just some more time with us, that we felt like we could really make a difference. And so for the student, for example, we noticed that for some students, it's wonderful that they have, for example, an extra math experience or an extra math class, but if they're going home and not able to do the homework, then they're showing up in their regular math class and not getting the full experience from that because they're not ready to go in that class. And so Pierce, the Pierce Academy is for that student who just really, if they had more time with teachers during the day, they would really excel. And so we have a group of about eight to 10 students in each grade level. Pierce Academy's Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays till 4 o'clock. It is, they are instructed by a teacher, and it does focus around both, certainly getting some of that homework done, but with an adult who can really sit and give some support. But more importantly, it builds a mentoring relationship between the teacher and the students, and a community of learners among the students, and there's increased parent communication. So there are multiple layers that really meet the needs of this particular group. And the, you know, the phone call that I get from the parent who says, "Dr. Spalding, I really want to help my student, but I'm at work till 6:30, and then I pick them up, and then we're home, and then we're eating, and now it's 8:30, and it's too late to start on homework." And even if they had all of the tools that they needed to be able to do that, it's, they're not going to get as much out of it as they could. And so for those students, as well as some others, it's really showing some great benefits. And the other one that I just want to highlight is the Calculus Project. We're very excited about the Calculus Project. I think Mr. Jet may have shared some of that with you when he was here presenting with the site council from Milton High School. We had an informational meeting last night. We had 37 people in attendance. We're doing another one tomorrow night, and students were invited to come to these informational meetings, and it's a program that is really different from how we traditionally think of supporting students. And instead of catching them after it's too late and after they're so far behind that they're struggling, it's previewing material and giving them a solid foundation so that they are more likely to take those higher-level mathematics courses. So we're very excited about that. So we're very excited about that as well.
So we spend quite a bit of time at site council talking about the importance of collecting and analyzing data to really see if the initiatives that we've designed and put into place are having their intended effect. And these conversations led to a rethinking this year of the math investigations course because it was shown that as students progressed from the sixth to eighth grade, there was a diminishing return of impact. And so we were thinking of alternative ways to have that course remain vital and interesting to the students. Similarly, it fed into the design of the Pierce Academy that Dr. Spalding was just talking about, and really helping us think about how do we make the most out of, how do we make the most out of the ELA and math content that the students are getting in their day courses as opposed to just adding more content on them at the end of the day? Going forward, the site council is going to be looking at what's the best way to measure the impact of these changes this year, to see if they are helping us move the goalposts towards improving student achievement overall, and if there aren't, then how can we use that data to stimulate new thinking about other approaches that we might try?
I'm Jeff Stot, and I'm going to talk about the changes afoot in science instruction at the middle school. I think the most obvious change is that we have these kits coming in. They've been coming in for a while. I can just speak to sixth grade, but my experience is mirrored in the other grades also. For the past three years in sixth grade, we've been using this kit called the FOS Kit, Diversity of Life, is the program. The aim with these kits is to make science instruction more inquiry-based. And I find myself thinking, as we talked about learning by design and thinking about the end, I thought, you know, that's, that's very appropriate for science, that the end be a question. Because, you know, it's important for kids to see that science is not a static body of knowledge. It's not just a bunch of information that you fill in a blank and that's it. It's actually a process of constantly asking questions. So we're getting the materials that enable kids to reach that, that end. The instruction is more hands-on with these kits. It is a great relief to have the materials right in the box there when I go to teach in the morning. And it is striking, in a way, how simple the materials are. Right now, I'm doing a kit, the topic is light, and we have, you know, a set of flashlights where we can set up six labs in the classroom, and, you know, screens and materials to pass the light through. Simple materials, but, you know, if you have the ability then to have a kid enter the room, and sometimes the desks are some ways, and six little stations and labs, and sometimes they're the other way, it's really electric for them. They really appreciate it. So in that way, instruction is changing, thanks to the kits. Now, another way is that we're keeping a close track of our assessments, and we're building continuously common assessments as we work with these kits. For this, I really do have to mention what a plus it is this year, to have a science coordinator right at the middle school. Kristi Chiapieta is our science coordinator, and it is just terrific to have her there on Tuesdays and Thursdays, to have her there for, you know, stopping in our classrooms and visiting, and making sure that, as the kids move from grade to grade, that the things that they're learning are connected to the Common Core, and eradicating any needless repetition that might be there. So there's a constant effort to align our curriculum with the Common Core. And, you know, I was struck by Gillian's remark about moving the goalpost. I definitely feel like we're moving the goalpost in a very positive way with our science instruction.
Good evening. My name's Mark Chek. I am a parent of a seventh-grade daughter at the Pierce Middle School and a proud member of the site council here. I'm also vice president for Information and Interactive Technology at the Museum of Science in Boston. So I'm also the resident technology evangelist in the site council here. We've had some great conversations over the last couple of years about the use of technology to support curriculum and to provide different types of experiences for the students. We've been really kind of looking at the field in our sector, in informal education, at computational thinking skills. So not so much how to use the technology, but how to use the technology that exists to support core curriculum like mathematics. And we've had a lot of great conversations. I had Greg Forge, one of the computer science teachers, come out and visit the museum last June to take a look at some of the informal education programs that we're doing, and some of the tools that we're using in places such as our Intel Computer Clubhouse and our Connors Computer Place. There's a variety of great technologies and kits and kind of mini-curriculums that are out now, including Makie Makies, Arduinos, things like that. So we had a great day. We spent together, kind of shared back and forth some ideas, and it's really nice to see those ideas being brought into some of the after-school programs that they're doing now and some of the core curriculum in computer science at the Pierce Middle School. Recent conversations this year have turned to the fact that we're also facing some other technology challenges. Park assessments now are going to be online, and one of the things I'm really happy about with the staff at the middle school is they're really hungry for the opportunities to figure out how technology can be integrated into these learning experiences. And with the park assessments, I believe they're doing a pilot program for the online park assessment this coming year. But rather than just simply waiting for that, they're kind of leading that by coming up with how do we get students used to doing mathematics assignments online and in a digital format, because it's a big change in terms of how students are going to be able to show mathematics works and their computational thinking skills. So we've had some conversations lately. I've invited a group of teachers, eighth-grade math teachers, and we are trying to set up a trip to the Museum of Science now to look at our new exhibit, which is the Hall of Human Life, 10,000-square-foot exhibit, but it's connected with about twenty biometric measurements where the students and visitors actually become part of the exhibit, so they can contribute data to a larger data set. And we have a data visualization tool that they can use within the exhibit, but also post-visit, get access to the entire data set and their data within it, so that we can encourage those students to become data explorers and understand how to find trends and to slice and dice that data based on things like gender and age and how people measured across different biometric measurements within that. And because we're doing that in scatter plot type of methodology, it really fits in with the type of curriculum that's appropriate in middle school right now in terms of teaching students how to digest and work with that data. So we're looking forward to just continuing to explore these opportunities.
I'm just going to talk briefly about what we're doing in the mathematics department to promote excellence in the classroom. I was fortunate enough, two weeks ago, to go down to a conference in Phoenix with the Department of Education, and there were thirteen other states there, and there was about ten people from each state. And I must say that I think that Milton's doing, you know, so many good things to get us, you know, ready into the new Common Core curriculum. I feel like we're, you know, a step ahead of many districts and states in many things that we do. This year, you know, we're, we're really into those interim assessments. We're doing interim assessments, common assessments every few units, and we're doing in-depth data analysis to see, you know, where our kids are, what our kids are learning and what we need to improve upon and what we can do to improve on that material. In sixth grade, we started doing these things every Friday for a weekly assignment called Blast from the Past, where they have an assignment and it's due the next week, and it covers all previous material that we did earlier in the year. And we try to focus those questions on the material that they had trouble on during the interim assessment. So I really think it's been very successful. What we're basically piloting this year, we started, you know, we did start it last year, but this year it's really in full swing, and, you know, we're continuing to make improvements in the math department.
Amy Flanagan was going to, Flanagan was going to speak to this slide. I will say briefly on her behalf, one of the things that she was going to mention is the idea that we try to think of parent and community engagement in the broadest sense that we possibly can. There are a variety of ways that parents can engage in their child's education, and we try to think of new ways and different ways and keep our ear to the ground to really find a variety of ways so that we can connect and partner with families. And one piece on this slide that I just wanted to highlight, which I know is also happening in the elementary schools as well, but we have the Box Activation Grant, and we will be starting in March, a twelve-week program. And we are looking for parent volunteers who would like to get up early in the morning and come and engage in physical activity with middle school students, because they're at their best in the morning. Or you can take attendance at the door, that would be fine, too. But it's based on the notion that if we get kids' bodies moving, then their brains will be better prepared for the academics that might be ahead in the day. And so we're very excited about that and definitely looking for volunteers. And I also just want to give a pitch for a fundraiser that we have, which is both a community partnership as well as a parent partnership. We have a PTO fundraiser this Saturday at the Pierce Middle School, and if you are interested in getting your CPR training, whether you are a health professional or not, we have two versions of that course, as well as a babysitter's, medics for babysitters course. And we've partnered with Pro EMS as well as Fallon Ambulance, who are offering the trainings and giving us an opportunity to raise funds. And so we're excited both as a health initiative, most especially, but it's also nice as a fundraiser as well. And I just want to also just mention the Curry College Eye-to-Eye Program, which is a partnership with Curry College. Eye-to-Eye is a national program that matches students at the college level with students at the middle school level who have defined disabilities. And so they have weekly sessions together where there's mentoring and they do art projects and develop awareness of sort of themselves and what their strengths are. And it's a program that we started last year with Curry and have continued this year, and it's extremely successful. And we're excited and appreciative to the Curry College folks. We've been doing work again in terms of this idea of trying to figure out a range of ways in which to engage with families, and some of that work has been happening through our diversity committee. And one of the projects, one of our latest projects that we're working on is partnering with some colleges, especially linked to Pierce Academy, to get, to do college visits and such with some of our students in Pierce Academy on a smaller scale, and then we'll scale up to more students. And so we're very excited about that, as well as some other initiatives like global, we have Global Celebration Night and such, that's celebrating and giving, again, a range of opportunities and reasons for families to come and connect in schools. And I'm going to, so I'm going to talk about what we've been doing in eighth-grade math this past month since we got back from vacation. Before vacation, there was emails going around between the three math teachers and Life Legaros, kind of talking about a way, it started with a discussion about kids that are absent a lot and how to get them caught up, and, you know, none of us really wanted to be on camera, and we didn't know how to do it, but we were thinking about that sort of flipped classroom atmosphere where they go home, they watch a video, and then they come in and they do their work with us, or they watch the video to catch up with what they missed in the classroom. And it turned into, well, we have these Chromebooks, and they're trying to figure out where a good use for them would be, so why don't we pilot this program and use the Khan Academy? So we spent part of our curriculum day, we had a day off, well, not a day off, but a day out of the classroom, we were doing curriculum, so we spent some time on the Khan Academy website, sort of looking at how to use it in the classroom. And we found some really great things, so we thought we'd pilot it. So within our unit, we were piloting the Khan Academy classroom. And it's a great way for kids to do practice problems for what we're doing, and so we can see how they're doing in their chat. As you saw in that video at the beginning, the questions get harder as they're getting them right, they get more challenging, and it sort of sees what they know and uses that to challenge them a little bit. And it's, they're hard, the questions are hard, and the kids are being challenged, and it's really great to see, and they really are enjoying it. We use it, I've used it in the classroom all of, was it last week? All of last week, we had them in the classroom for our use, and then this week, I had it for a couple of days. And the kids get really excited when they get to use it, and I gave them, you know, an incentive, they can earn energy points, and the more points they earn, I said they would get a prize at the end of the term, and they really want to be on it, and they like the challenge, and they're having discussions with each other that we don't normally see. I feel like when it's pen to paper, they're so focused on the paper, but since they're on the computer trying to figure out how to do math on the computer, there's a lot of conversation, and it's really exciting, and everybody's really having a great time with it. So we hope that going forward, I mean, this could be something that we could be, it's not something I want to do every day. I like to be in front of the room, I like to teach, I like to do that, but to see them engaging and getting ready for the park assessment and doing math on the computer and learning how to do that and watching them, like, how do I put X to the second power? And they have to figure that out, and it's just, it's been a really good experience, and the kids like it, and we're really enjoying it. She's being a little humble there. That was a humble description of what's happening in eighth-grade mathematics with the Chromebooks, because it did go from some emails flying back and forth over holiday break to, "Dr. Spalding, we're going to need those sixty Chromebooks in the eighth grade every day for the first five days so we can get the students on it." And another component is also they are using Edmodo, which is an online education sort of place that students can blog about the assignments. So students, you know, a student who's, you know, at 7:30 at night and they're stuck on number 12, they can get on and say, "Hey, did anyone, does anyone know how to start number 12?" And they can support each other virtually, so they're doing that. And the other piece that is especially rewarding for me to watch is just the collaboration. It's all three eighth-grade math teachers talking to each other about teaching and willing to take a risk, and that risk has really paid off. And we're paying attention to the things that we were worried about, like, well, what about the student who doesn't have technology at home and doesn't have access to technology? And so we've been brainstorming solutions to that so that we address those students as well and make sure that they're getting the full benefit, because it's both sometime in-classroom as well as out. And the latest is I've been receiving video clips that the teachers have been making themselves. So it's, there is a lot of wonderful technology stuff happening with that, with that project.
At the middle school also occurring is student mentoring. This is an integral component of the Pierce Academy and the Eye-to-Eye Program. The student council continues to provide opportunities for student leadership with their canned food drive and their toy drive at Christmas time. Anything else? Okay.
Hello, my name is Lisa Viola, and I'm a parent of a sixth grader, and I'm also a member of the site council. And I just wanted to share with you some of the ways that we're trying to build a sense of community among the students by offering, as has always been done at Pierce, but there's so many ways that we try to find a connection with students, both between the teachers and the students, but the students with each other. And I don't know if any of you were able to attend the Secret Garden performances last week, but...
It was so wonderful.
They were phenomenal. And to just see the number of students that were onstage or running props behind the curtains or running the lights or sound, it was truly spectacular. And they, they come together and they feel that connection of working together to put on a fabulous production. But there's so many ways, whether you're an athlete and you participate in the intramural sports program, whether you're a student leader and participate in student... sports program, whether you're a student leader and participate in Student Council, if you are interested in giving back to the community, there's always different drives that are taking place, the music program, both within the school day, before and after school. There's so many ways that our kids are fortunate to find a way to express themselves and develop passions. And as a parent, I find it very rewarding and gratifying that it also draws families into the school. So parents can see what's taking place. You don't always hear directly from our kids what's going on, but it's really nice to be able to participate, to engage with other parents at performances, and to have younger siblings or older siblings be able to see what they can envision themselves doing down the road. There's a couple of dates I just wanted to mention, so hopefully you can join us. Coming up, March 27th is the Science Fair. It was a huge success last year. There was, Karen, I don't know how many students participated, but yeah...
We had 100 projects, so actually participating was probably almost twice that.
It was incredible, very well attended. And then on May 1st is, May 1st is the Pierce Global Celebration, so we hope you'll be able to join us at those events.
That concludes our formal presentation. So thank you for your patience, both through our video as well as us highlighting some of the things that we are very excited about at the Pierce Middle School.
Mr. Phelan.
First of all, thank you very much, everyone, for coming, and it's very exciting to see a lot of the initiatives at Pierce. And I was wondering if you could connect us to some of those initiatives in the advancement budget. The community and the school committee has worked hard for advancement funds, and could you tell the public which of those bodies of work are attached to some of the funds that were dedicated by the advancement budget?
Absolutely. Definitely our work in science, so all of those curriculum units that Mr. Stot was speaking to, the units that keep coming in, and it's the running joke in the office now that there's another delivery for the Science Department, which is a great thing, as well as certainly having Kristi Chapetta as the Science Coordinator at the Pierce Middle School. She's in, as Mr. Stot described, in classrooms, doing assessment work, doing curriculum, doing all of those things. Also supported by the advancement budget is Pierce Academy, in particular targeting that achievement gap and really us sort of trying to think creatively about how can we, how can we catch those students that we feel like we're just not doing everything we possibly can? And we design the program around their needs, and it's funded through the advancement budget, as well as certainly professional development money in order to do the work with teachers around curriculum and assessment work and that kind of thing.
And also, it should be known, the reason why the Calculus Project is brought up by both Dr. Spalding and James Jett is that we're piloting our first year with grade seven students going into grade eight, who eventually will be Milton High School students. So it's a partnership program between Pierce and the high school, and that is also a proficiency gap advancement budget and agenda item that was funded. So money being put to good use and initiatives in action, and money and resources in action, both at Pierce and the high school. So thank you very much.
And the added benefit of the Calculus Project is it's both targeting students and supporting them and having them in higher level, or the likelihood that they will be in, increase the likelihood that they'll be in higher level math courses. But also, it creates yet another opportunity for six through 12 articulation of mathematics. So eighth grade teachers will be planning with high school teachers so that we really have a nice, smooth transition in terms of what students are learning in mathematics in this particular case.
And we should share with this Calculus Project and the research behind it that that pre-teaching will take place in the summer, the support will take place all through the school year. And the research proves that if you prepare students to enroll and succeed in calculus, that it's a differentiating factor in their education. So that's the goal. I often say to the high school staff, nobody wakes up at the 11th grade and says, I think I want to take an advanced placement class. The preparation has to start, I'm an advocate for kindergarten and first grade, but in those formative, important sixth and seventh and eighth grade years. So that is a phenomenal response to have parents come out who are interested and want to hear about the program.
Mr. Walker.
So if I could only respond with one word, it would be wow. You are, all of you are the reason why we are the excellent school system that we have become. It is, it is just so impressive to listen to parents talking about the arts and the school as a community, about using data to drive decision-making, about partnerships with the Museum of Science, teachers emailing over the vacation, our involvement in programs that have received national attention, like the Calculus Project and Khan Academy. The, it's, it's, it's very, very impressive. And by the way, the mission statement, I don't know what changes you've made, but I'd be really happy with that as a mission statement for the Milton Public Schools. It is, it's very impressive. And I, I would just encourage you to continue doing the things you're doing. It sounds like every student in this community is, is, has your attention and is on your mind, and you have strategies for reaching every single one of them. I can, I can look at the video and just listen to all of you and understand the energy that must be in that community. And some of the references in the presentation about viewing the school as an organization, it is a school, but it's an organization, and the references from Good to Great and the Seven Habits of Highly Effective People, that's, that's what great organizations do, and that's how, that's how good organizations become great. So I congratulate all of you. The only question is, is there anything we can do to support what you're doing and help you get there more quickly? That's my only question.
When would you like the list?
Seriously? Take some time and, and as soon as possible, but take some time, because these are, the only thing we should do is just support you. I mean, I, this is great.
A lot of our conversations, especially with the schooling by design, have also been sort of leaning in a, talking even down to the level of scheduling and the way that we do scheduling and the minutes that we give kids for subjects and all of that, does that support all of the things that we want? And so we will be continuing those conversations and come back with some ideas for sure.
And I'm going to hold you to that, and, you know, we have these conversations, and I know we have a hierarchy, but I want to make sure that we get some feedback, that we hear what they had to say about the answer to that question.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Very impressive. Really appreciate it, and I love the slideshow or the, whatever you did at the beginning.
Video.
Video, I was very impressed. Really nice to hear it all, and it's just an amazing program and school and staff. I'm not surprised at all that you were emailing over vacation. Thank you.
Can you use the microphone?
As a longtime site council member, first at the elementary level and now at Pierce, she's fantastic. I mean, the energy and the vision and the drive, it makes all of us as members get up early to come to a 7:00 AM in the morning meeting and agree to meet over the summer. And it's, it's a completely fantastic experience, and it makes our volunteer hours feel meaningful.
It's quite a testament.
Mr. Walker wanted to add one more thing.
And curiously, I would, it was to echo what Ms. Najarian just said. This, the thing you should be particularly proud of is, and I have to credit Mr. Phelan and Mr. Jett before you, Dr. Spalding, but this, this school and this point in our school system between elementary and high school, there was a point in our town where we were losing lots of parents, where parents were saying, I needed a different alternative, and that's no longer the case. This is a place where parents want to send their children, and you should be very, very proud of that.
I have a few comments, too. First, I'd like to say thank you for a terrific presentation. And again, kind of to echo what Mr. Walker said about the outstanding representation on your school site council. It's so impressive, and you clearly all have a role that you play and something that you contribute greatly to this, to this school community. What really struck me in your presentation tonight was how you reach the whole child and not just the individual child, but, you know, you think about giving back and how they can give back to their community and how you grab the kids. Is it through sports or is it, you know, how do you keep them involved? And so often in middle school, as someone who knows middle school intimately, that's not always done, and I think that you're really capturing it so well. And you're also looking at, I think, historically, middle school is a time when parents don't get involved. And I heard you all say multiple times throughout this presentation, you know, how are we including the parents, how are we bringing the parents in, how are we informing the parents, you know? And so that's clearly at the forefront of your thought, and I think that that's really critical in this, in this day and age, that we keep parents and families engaged in not just the school community, but the greater community. So I want to thank you for all of that, the great work, and I could go on and on about all the different things, but I won't because I, you just did it very well, and I'm very proud of where Pierce Middle School is today, so thank you. Ms. Cora?
I want to thank you. When you were speaking, I said it really, when site councils began, you exemplified the best of what a site council can be, involved in every aspect of the school, and you're so appropriate with the leadership of Dr. Spalding. So I want to thank you on behalf of the students and the entire district. A plus. Thank you. Next, I'd like to move to, we, we had a, our annual diversity report presentation in October. By your school committee policy, the diversity report is submitted before October 15th. I believe that we're one of the only school districts in the state who has a diversity policy for one of their school committee policies. And Member Walker asked after the presentation if we would put it back on the agenda, and in conversations, we have invited Citizens for Diverse Milton to join us at the table, so if you'd come right up. We'll make introductions, but we were going to revisit the report, and I don't want to speak for the school committee, but I think our plans with Citizens for Diverse Milton and Mr. Walker was to make this an interactive presentation. Before we begin, would you make introductions, Pat, of all members, and maybe frame Citizens for, I could frame Citizens for Diverse Milton and introduce yourselves, but perhaps frame for the viewing public and make introductions before we begin.
So my name is Pat Lattimore, and I'm a member of Citizens for Diverse Milton. Citizens for Diverse Milton has been around 16 or 17 years, and we've been working with the superintendent and the assistant superintendent to help the system to embrace diversity, parental engagement, and as well as student engagement and high achievements for all students. So we've done a lot of things over the last few years, and in fact, over the last five years, we've been in joint planning with the schools to hold system-wide diversity meetings on a biannual basis. We've also been an active, active members of pretty much every school's diversity committees, local diversity committees. We meet monthly with Mary Gormley and John Phelan, and we've also met fairly regularly with the different schools as well as some of you. So that's us in a nutshell, and I'll let everybody else introduce themselves.
Hello, I'm Chris Navin.
Elizabeth Thomas, I am with the Tucker Diversity Committee.
And I'm Cynthia Geis. I have two children who have gone through the schools.
And before we begin, I would say that seeing the PS site council and the time they give and their involvement in the system, the individuals who have joined us here tonight and Citizens for Diverse Milton are partnering to improve the schools. You are outstanding partners. We meet monthly, but your involvement in the schools is beyond the monthly meetings with the district-wide meetings that we'll discuss tonight, and from hiring to revitalizing and making a difference in these committees and diversity within our schools. On behalf of the Milton Public Schools, I want to thank you. And you have been tenacious in your cause and your work, and really, I don't think many school systems have partners like that who give so selflessly as you all do.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Do you want to frame this?
Sure. So I, I would again thank the superintendent and her team. The diversity report has expanded quite a bit in scope. I've asked for a lot more information than we started out with a few years ago. And I know that Dr. Pavlicek and Maura Downs and others have contributed to this data-rich report. So I ask that we put it back on the agenda at least one more time. I do have some specific questions, not many, but ones that I think are important for discussion. And as the superintendent said, we're viewing this as a discussion that we expect you to be involved in, so feel free to jump in at the appropriate point. So we're not, we're not going to go through the entire presentation again, I'm going to jump right into the questions. Staffing data, so I'm on, pages aren't numbered, but it's the staffing data by rating, I'm teaching staff only. The question there, it looks like we're down a teacher of color at the Glover. If you look at the 2010 data, 2010-11 data to now, we're down one, and at the Pierce, we're down two. So the question is, do we have, assuming that we, we think that a diversity of staff in each school is a good thing, and I think we do, do we have a strategy for how to, how to not go backwards, so to speak? So we're down three staff, that, and for the numbers that we're talking about, that's a very big deal. So how do we, how do we approach that? And I know, I know we're at something of a loss because we don't real, we don't really have a human resources component or group here. Obviously, assistant superintendent has that as part of his responsibility, but we don't have an HR professional, so to speak. So how do we do recruitment? What's our recruitment strategy?
And I'll follow.
So over the past few years, in our work with Citizens for Diverse Milton in to try to set the goal of having our staff match our student makeup in terms of minority and non-minority students, we really focused on, after some discussions, and I remember having it with Chris Navin, increasing the pool of candidates that apply for jobs, not just increasing the final candidate to be someone who may be a minority candidate, because you have to have a pool of candidates before you can have one candidate for the job. So the strategy we had, and this was three years ago, is we went to SchoolSpring, which is a new software and web-based program that happens to be currently the best way for any and all educators to take part in applying for positions. And we felt that that access to more candidates and also being able to see the candidates in a way electronically, who were, what their degree level was, what their background was, what their minority, non-minority status was, we have all that data. So we now are working with more information and able to create better pools of candidates, especially when we're looking at jobs for principal, administrator, et cetera. We also participate in job fairs, and we started to do targeted job fairs. We were always in the one at Boston College, but we decided to start to take part with UMass Boston and Bridgewater as well. We were trying to look at university... look at universities that may produce more teachers that may be minority enrolled. And so those relationships we have with those universities help as well. But I think that we make it a priority to sit down and interview for positions that we are always looking to keep in mind that, that is, we have children in our district who want to see teachers in front of them who look like them. And that that is a priority for the superintendent, which becomes a priority for the assistant superintendent, which becomes a priority for the principals and coordinators at higher. So that is our strategy to make sure that we use the publications that are read in all areas where we can reach as many people, that we use SchoolSpring to increase the pool of folks of color and of minority status, and to have partnerships with universities that hopefully will provide us with candidates that reflect some of those minority groups that we would like to have with us.
So just a couple of points there. And I want to be crystal clear that in my, both my professional life and my school committee life, I'm, I'm advocating always that we hire the best candidate. So as you correctly point out, though, one of the ways to improve, increase the likelihood that we might hire outstanding minority candidates is to increase the pool of candidates. And, and on the point of it, it is good for children to have teachers in front of them that look like them, but it's also good for teacher, students to have teachers in front of them that don't look like them. So, and on that point, so I, not only do we want teachers of color at the Pierce, at the Tucker, we want them throughout the system. So I think, one, are, as we recruit for vacancies going forward, how do we become more aggressive at getting the best minority candidates? If you think about this as the searches that companies do, sometimes you may have to pull candidates from other places. The best candidates usually aren't out of a job. The best candidates are usually working somewhere else. So how do you, how do you make that happen? How do you find those candidates? And that's where I think we, I'm not sure we have the capacity to do that, but you tell me.
Well, we, we actually do. And it's not something that we talk about very openly, but we have.
And, and I don't want you to reveal your strategy.
Well, I mean, I, I think we very.
Keep a secret, but just assure me that.
We actively, what I would call, network with our partners in different school districts that may have teachers that would want to work in a great place like Milton Public Schools that happen to be minority applicants. And quite frankly, they're, they're sought-after individuals. And so when we meet with them, we definitely portray the, the work life in Milton as being one that is full of professional development, beautiful buildings, excited students, parents who support. And, and that's how we try to pitch ourselves to any candidate. But we, we do compete, quite frankly, with Brookline and Boston and Newton, as would be three of our biggest competitors, for minority candidates. And so we have had interactions where we recruited people over and they've been very happy. And then they get drawn back to, to a system or charter school because that's their desire to work in a more of a, a more urban setting. So we actively make those contacts with, with people that we know within those districts. We have meetings before. We even have openings to talk about what might be happening in Milton Public Schools. And, and in some cases, we're doing that two years before someone may come over. And we have spent a lot of time creating relationships with people that has ultimately resulted in people taking positions two or three years later because we started to make and build very good relationships with those folks who decided at a certain point in their life, now's the time to come to Milton. But it is a competitive process. There was an article in the Boston Globe just last week about the Boston Public Schools finding it difficult to maintain the percentages of faculty that represent minority populations of students. And we, we do want to say out loud, partner with CDM that on, in our major hires, they have a seat at every table of building principal and coordinator. And they are a, a component of that interview team and search committee and all those big hires, which I think is really important. It makes sure that that voice is heard during that process. And it keeps everybody honest and keeps that subject on the table while we're talking about who the best candidate may be for the Milton Public Schools and why. And I would say, and I think it's recognized in the data, that the breakdown of our staff by gender and by minority, non-minority is pretty, on average, with the state. So it's not just the town of Milton that is looking to try to increase this and has lower numbers. We are on par with what other folks are, are experiencing. And we are working hard to change that on behalf of the district.
And I have to say, too, CDM offers always to, we go over our openings and they offer to assist us. But different from other districts, we have very honest conversations. And we use strategies that obviously our leadership team is diverse. And so that sends a message, diversity is important to us. And so in our teaching staff and our support staff, and we speak with CDM, our goal is to look at every department, every school, every level. And so I would use the music department as an example last year, a small department that didn't have any diversity within that department. And I would say John Phelan and the music department head, we have shared with CDM that when, with every form, the principals do the hiring. Ultimately, they bring their candidates to John and myself. But we work with them to make sure that they have interviewed a diverse pool. And we have very honest conversations. You know, it's not the first candidate that comes in front of you. Have you interviewed a diverse population? You know, let's stop. Let's look at your department. Let's look at your school. You know, look at the last two or three people you have hired. What's going on in your school, your department? And so for, from my perch, I look at every school, every department within the school. And we have conversations because in the school structure, the department heads really do a lot of the interviewing. And so it starts with who you're interviewing. And if your pool's not diverse, that you and John were just referring to, then you're not going to be able to diversify ultimately your staff. So to, to me, it's the conversation, you know, it's when we sit down with committees. I said, we don't sit down anymore with all white women. And so we look, if, if we model our behavior with every committee should reflect the population that's in our school and our, and in our community. I would tell you, I go to meetings across town. And it's important to us because we have, we have a diverse population of children. And as you said, both children of color and white children, we all benefit from a diverse teaching staff, a diverse leadership staff. And so we have to look at these numbers. We don't want to go backwards. And so we have to really, in the hiring, set goals for ourselves, sit down with every principal and every department head and have those conversations. And I have to tell you, I've shared with, with Citizens for Diverse Milton, we can go to the job fairs, but it's a tremendous amount of networking. It has to be, it's even more than diversity, diversifying the staff. If I look at the staff, it's people who feel good about teaching in the Milton Public Schools. When we hire candidates, we said we have unbelievable children. We have parents who return your calls within 24 hours. We have a school committee, a community that has overrides to support. We share why individuals want to come to this community. So again, individuals of color that teach on our staff, some of our best networking has been when they have friends who are teachers who, you know, want to come to this school district. And so again, we don't want to go backwards. And to me, it all starts with a conversation, a conversation with those who do the hiring, ultimately with John Glenn and myself. And again, if we, if our leadership team in our district has to mirror our community, but more than that, what's good for all of our children.
Right. So I, I think what we have to sell is a recruiter's dream. But what do we anticipate for elementary teaching vacancies for fiscal 15? Do we know yet what that looks like?
We have one retirement. I, it would be hard to say in January. I could say we would better know in April. I would say that we hire between five to eight elementary teachers, maybe, over the course of, for one year to the next due to leaves and maternity leaves and teachers retiring.
Great.
Roughly.
And I, I would tell you, we have a leadership meeting within the next two weeks. We do a draft agenda. And FY15 hiring now just starts to make the agenda. And it's on every agenda.
So maybe in May, we could get an update on that.
Can I jump in? So we do want to acknowledge and congratulate the system on having such a diverse set of principals across, across the six schools. And we think that's a great accomplishment. And we think it was very intentional to bring up the level of diversity among the leadership team. And I think it, it does show, and I know the networking was involved, and I think it does show that, you know, the effort pays off. Actually, my reading of that Boston Globe article about Boston was that the problem was that they took their eye off the ball, that they had been making progress. And when, I think there was a particular position that was dedicated to increasing, or to recruitment of teachers of color. And that position was vacant and the numbers went down. So I think it does take continued attention, just like the attention you gave to the, the principal position. I think the recruitment by networking, I think, has always been one of the most effective ways to do it. I wonder, or we wonder if the, if we are fully utilizing existing staff for that? I think that might be an area where that, that could be, there's some potential there to get some added value. Also, sometimes it seems like that staff of color leave disproportionately compared to white staff. And so I don't know if there's a, an exit interview process in place, but that might yield some information about, about reasons for staying or leaving. Finally, the, just as our work with the superintendent and John has been, has included hiring, we think that the work of the local committees at the schools could involve hiring in some way that is supportive to the principals. If indeed, in particular, they are doing most of the hiring, why not get some support from the diversity committees who, again, could help with their networking and also could help keep the principal's eye on the ball? So obviously, we, we do want to see the numbers, the percentages go back up in the right direction. And we think that with that kind of attention that was brought to the principals' positions, that can happen.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Yes, Chris.
Chris, what do you mean exactly when you say approaching the teachers that are already here for their ideas, like a concrete way that they're not already doing?
Making sure that they know about the positions that are open and asking them to refer well-qualified candidates, particularly, but not exclusively, people of color.
No, no, no. I, I just want to know concretely what you had in mind, because I know you do networking already, but maybe there's a way to go.
I'd like to add that I would like to be sure that the teachers of color who have been hired have the support that they might need, perhaps from other people, other teachers of color, or just in general, feeling like they are welcome. I have heard otherwise by other teachers, which surprised me. And so I wanted to, you know, that's something to consider when you're, when you're looking at the situation. How long are they there? And as Chris mentioned, an exit interview would be good, if possible, if they're willing to be honest. What worked, what didn't work, what they felt like they might have needed in addition to what they got.
Can I just, so a couple of things, and I'll try not to say all of them because it could take me all night. But I do really appreciate you being here. And I also appreciate the work that the school leadership team has done for quite a while now, as I know you do. The, and I'm really glad to hear the point about the diverse staff is good for everyone. So I was really glad to hear that from a couple of people. The exit interviews, I remember, for work, reading a study about teachers with under three years' experience, why they would leave, and they just felt like they didn't have the support in general. We don't have an HR person or a department, but it might be something in our long-term planning in terms of all teachers, why do they leave under a certain amount of time? What kind of support do they get? Maybe it's an anonymous questionnaire, because it's very difficult, even when you do have HR. You're not necessarily going to tell HR why you're really leaving. So that might be something to think about if that doesn't already happen, just in terms of anonymous. And we do have a mentor program, right, for new teachers?
We do.
So that's something that maybe, you know, they can keep talking about. I had another question here. Oh, I also was glad to see, sort of shifting a little bit here, about the gender-neutral bathroom at the high school. Is that correct? I had talked to my kids about this, and they're both like, what's the big deal, mom? You know, like, what? Who cares? Like, it was, and it was very reassuring that that's the culture of the high school, anyway, from what I can see about, you know, what's the big deal about the gay-straight alliance? I don't, I don't want to put my, the high school students on here on the spot, but I was very pleased when I walk around the school and I see a lot of things about the gay-straight alliance, and it's not a big deal. It's not like, oh. So I thought that that was really a good thing. And I saw and hear about the multicultural student forums. And I don't know if those have happened recently or who's in, like, is that a, how did those get off the ground? Because I think that's a really great thing for the kids to be working on, not just for us to tell them, but for the kids to be interacting. So when we say the multicultural forums led by students, I'm not exactly sure where that comes from. So.
Are you referring to the accomplishments, items that people sent in?
Yes. I can, somewhere, oh, I don't know the page, but it's on the same one as the gender-neutral bathrooms. A leadership group of students was right before it, and then it's this multicultural student forum. I'm sure Mr. Jett would know.
I'll have to follow up on that one.
Yeah. I just thought that was a great model to try to keep that, those conversations going, since we are a more diverse town than many other towns. And so, you know, to keep the kids talking.
Right. Involve the students. That's right. Involving the students.
Right.
And led by the students, which I think is really powerful. So.
Just wanted to, we, a couple, we, we have our twice yearly meetings. And a couple of years ago, when CDM and the Milton Public Schools put together the one pager of the mission of the partnership, and we were meeting right over here in the, in the library, we had a really big conversation about what, what did we all mean by diverse? Because we had been thinking of that in terms of African-American students and families. And it was a very interesting conversation that afternoon that I'll never forget about how people who were parents of special education children wanted to make sure that, that that was a piece of what meant to be diverse. And families that come from, parents that moms and moms or dads and dads. And so that was a really rich discussion. And it really took, I think, it was a hard discussion. I remember it being really tense at, at a couple of moments. And I thought at the end, it was really a great afternoon of a hard conversation about what does it mean to be, what does diverse mean, and what is the definition of it? And so when I think of that, I, I do think of who, and Kristen brought it up through, the Gay-Straight Alliance. And I, I do want to make sure that when we talk about diversity, which seems to be a word that people get confused by sometimes as to what it means, is that we are looking to, to recognize folks from different backgrounds, make them feel welcome, make sure that they see that they're important in the community. And who they are, it looks a lot different all the time in, in what does that mean at each school. And so it looks a little different at Colley Court than it looks at Tucker, than it looks at Pierce. It's students who have special needs and have, we want to make sure we have access issues for students who are low socioeconomic or. issues for students who are low socioeconomic or don't speak the language of English. So all of those things make up the diversity work that we do in the Milton Public Schools. And ironically, I think it's important when we talk about staffing to talk about the gender issue that we have, especially at the middle school, I mean, at the elementary level, where, you know, we, we really do need more men teachers in front of our students at, at the elementary level. So it's, it's not a one-stop-shopping place in terms of what all those things mean and look like. And I always think it's important to make that part of the conversation as we talk about the work of the diversity committee and, and how it's a very big umbrella that, that opens up and includes a lot of different types of families, and I think that that's really important.
And what, if I might say, one more note to what John had to say about this. I've often said to incoming groups of parents, we can talk about MCAS scores, we can talk about where students go to college, but I, I say publicly all the time, I think the most fortunate children and the Commonwealth are the children that go to school in the Milton Public Schools. And to me, when I looked at the diversity in the community, it, a good sign is when the diversity is growing, because that says to me, people of color want to move to this community. So I, I feel like my failure would be if somebody doesn't feel accepted within the school district, if a family or a child doesn't feel accepted. And so to me, with a diversity growing within the school district, that says that people feel good about the school district, and they're moving to the school district. People, I say to the incoming kindergarten parents, you're smart consumers. You know just what you're doing. You're making selections for your children. You know, a Globe reporter said, why do you and John talk differently than other superintendents? You're in competition with private and parochial schools. I said, we certainly are. I said, we want every child that lives in the Milton Public Schools to come to the Milton Public Schools. There might be other issues, why people leave, but I don't want anyone saying that they don't feel accepted, welcome, no one's ever told me that, or we want them to say that they get the same challenge that they would get in a public or parochial school. So we are in competition, and we want to offer the best that there exists in the Commonwealth. But when the population in the town increase, that's a message to us that people want, people are choosing this town and this school district for their children. So to me, we have all of these issues, and we can do better in all of these issues, but the message has to be first that, again, for the children of color and the white children, they are so fortunate to go in a diverse school district. I, I don't know, money couldn't buy, in a private or parochial school, what all the children get in the Milton Public Schools.
I certainly.
That's how I feel about diversity.
Couldn't agree more.
We all are beaming like proud, proud grandparents or parents.
Exactly. Okay, go ahead.
Just a quick thing on that, maybe that's the next question also. I agree with you, Mary, that, that the growing diversity in the town speaks to the quality of the public schools. Because, and this is more anecdotal for me, but, you know, as you talk to people, the town schools do attract parents, and of any color, of all colors. And so I think that for us to recognize that that is a value that many, I know that I moved to Milton because of the diversity in the town as well as in the schools. But it does mean that we have then an obligation to support that diversity in the town. And that's why the staffing piece is so important. I mean, all of our children are living in an increasingly diverse world, and that's going to become even more diverse, and we all know that. So that ability to navigate is why it's so very important for every child to have an experience of staff that is very broad. And that's one of the reasons why, as we meet with superintendent and the assistant superintendent, that we continually, for the last, I don't know, 18, 19 years, have been harping on this issue of staff diversity. I would say that we've done a great job at the leadership level, as Chris said, and as Mary has noted. And in some of the schools, we've actually seemingly had some very good success in terms of, you know, you see Tucker has a very high, a higher level of staff of color. And so I wonder, what is it that that school has discovered that we could share maybe with some of the other schools around, especially at the leadership level, about how do you seek out candidates of color? Because clearly, one school in our own district is, you know, a little bit outstanding in that regards.
Well, we, I think, I don't know if the Tucker does anything in isolation of the other six schools, quite frankly. I think that we all sit together, we, the, the leadership team, we have internal job fairs, we send folks from every school. I think, you know, quite frankly, when you look back at the work that Marsha Yuretsky did at the Tucker School, I think she was an aggressive recruiter, so she did actually have contacts in other systems that she had worked as a consultant and through Tufts University. So I think a combination of things have resulted in maybe a higher number at Tucker. There's certainly not a, a single way to motivate principals just to get, you know, to get it to look like that. I don't think, I just think that that's how the numbers shook out at that school. So we're a small enough school system with just six principals to be able to do this work together, and we do do it together. And it's, when those six principals are in the room with the superintendent, they all hear the same thing that the Tucker principal heard, that the Colley Court principal heard. When you're interviewing folks, I better hear that you had candidates, that this pool was, was a diverse pool. So that's a universal message. We can certainly investigate maybe some of the recruiting practices that were happening prior to Dr. McNeil-Gremar coming on, and, and we can scratch that out a little bit, that's definitely worthwhile. I don't think it was intentful or purposeful, I just think that that's how the, the staff landed at each of their schools. So, but we will review it, that's a good point.
Can I just ask one more thing? And I don't mean to make more work for anybody, but I know when the athletic department comes and presents, I believe that they talk about the racial makeup of the athletes. Do they? I think they do. But anyway, whether they do or don't, I think that that would be a good thing for us to also keep an eye on. How many kids are we getting in sports, kids of color? Also, the economics of it, you know, kids from both sides of town, that, you know, the free and reduced lunch and the poverty level or whatever. And also, I, I have loved every single coach that my kids have ever had, but, you know, it would be nice to diversify as we can. Not saying anybody should be let go, or anything like that, and I love them all, and they're great. But, you know, as we go forward, it would be a nice thing to, it would be a good thing to be able to think about. And I know those positions are hard because they're a part-time job after school. It's kind of like you're, you're pushed into a select group of folks because of, well, you know, anyway, I'm rambling again, but I think that that's something important that I know Mary and John have both spoken about and have both really looked at. But the coaches are so happy, we don't really get a lot of turnover in our coaches either. So that's just my last bit.
It's an interesting point, because in the report, there is a page, I think it's toward the end, on athletics, and, and once again, it's not labeled in terms of the numbers, I don't think. But it does say, and I think that that was one of the things that we found was somewhat encouraging, is that if you look at the diversity of the athletes, it is, you are beginning to see parity with the system. And so I think that that's a very good thing. We, so we applaud that, because that hasn't always been the case. And I do agree with you, Kristen, that if, that if we could have more diversity in the coaching staff, that would be important, too. Because we do think that athletics is a really important piece of a child's education, and how you feel welcome in a system and a part of it or engaged with the system, because it's not just the academics piece. I mean, if you look, you know, most kids, I think, thinking back to their school careers, it might be the sports, or the music, or something like that, that made the difference of why they were an engaged student, or why they just gave up.
And just a reminder, that, that was one of the district-wide meetings that we had two years ago, where we actually surveyed peer students and high school students and did a, I wouldn't call it a scientific study, but we did an analysis of, if you are engaged in school, does that, what does that mean, and what does that look like, in an attempt to engage as many students as possible, to then have them be more academically, you know, hopefully the student outcomes go along with people wanting to be in school and attracting as many people as possible. And that was a CDM Milton Public School survey that we did. I think it was two, two years ago that we got that data and we reviewed it. So that was very, very, it was, that was a very productive afternoon to look at and analyze that kind of data on behalf of the students.
So to John's point, and I know you're going to get into these district-wide committees that really CDM has pushed the envelope on, another thrust of our work with CDM has been parent involvement, and how to make our parent involvement more reflective of our diversity. So we really spent two years with the committees and the parents and the administrators, looking at, is it by invitation? Is it bringing, calling up? Are we doing the right activities that welcome all families to the schools? So that is a, that, if we're putting issues on the table, that's another huge issue for us, to make sure that we're not looking out at a parent evening or a family evening, and it isn't reflecting the population in the school. And we've had some issues around that, and we have concrete plans in each school. And again, it's the honest discussion of putting that forward, and what are you concretely doing? You know, I, I would tell you another example, Kristen's talking about the coaches, we looked at the preschool at the Colley Court School, and it was by lottery, and I said, we just can't rely on the preschool, that's so competitive, and because it's housed at the Colley Court School, we have to make sure it reflects the population of our community. So it's, Kristen's talking about coaches, we're looking at the preschool, and we're looking at every aspect, the staffing, the student involvement, and the family participation. So diversity is, you know, it has many, many lives within the schools.
And Mary.
Trying to move this along.
I was just going to say, so Mr. Walker has more questions to ask, so if we could just go back to those, and probably some of this will come up through that as well.
Thank you. So the next question is, I'm, I'm very proud of the relationship that the school administration has with CDM. I'm curious to hear both from the administration and from CDM, how they think the school-based diversity committees are working.
Do you want me to start?
Yes.
So I think that one of the things is that we're very proud that each school now has a diversity committee. And so I think that's been, and, you know, something that has really been built up over time. Some schools naturally have them, other schools have been a little bit slower in the coming. So that's a piece that we think is a very good thing. However, as we think about the school-based diversity committees, and we've talked about this a lot during our system-wide meetings, is to try to give them a sense of a, what is the charter? And so over the last couple of years, because most of the, most of the committees of the schools, the parent sort of engaged committees, have something specific that they're supposed to be doing. And what we've found is that a lot of parents have come to the committees and not quite clear about how those committees fit within the structure of the school. So this year, last year, we talked, as John mentioned, about how do we get a charter for those committees so that they can really know what they're going to do, how they're supposed to be engaged, and then begin to do the work. And so our view is that it's a great thing to have them, and that's a very good first step. And then the next step is to help them to really start to actively become a part of the school fabric.
So are you working with John, Mary, and the principals on those charters? Or how's that?
So we have, we, we developed a charter a couple of years ago, and what we also did was to help each of the schools to kind of kickstart their effort a little bit, we've personally, members of our committee have actually joined each of the committees. And so we're working with, at the school level. So for example, I work with the Colley Court School, and, and others work with some of the other schools, to try to help them to understand, sort of, how do you do this? Because it is a new committee, and it's very difficult to start something new and bring it, you know, to life in, in an organization like a school. So I'd say we're at early days yet. Would we say that we're, as a CDM, ecstatic about the progress? No, but we're encouraged that we are going to make some progress on.
There's some structural issues, like the, you want teachers on the committee so the meeting times gravitate towards right after school. You want parents on the committee, so that means either before school, when they're dropping off the kids, or at night. So it's been, it's been a challenge to find times that, that work for a critical mass within each school. And I know there's some, some kind of out-of-the-box thinking about how to address that.
Well, the site, site councils seem to have figured that out, so I would imagine there's a solution there somewhere.
It's working very well at the Tucker. We, we meet in the mornings at 7:45. So you have the principals, and parents, and teachers, and that seems to be working well. But Tucker has been one of the schools that's always been a leader in, with the diversity committee. So for us, that seems to be working well.
Okay, I, I think we might ask you to come back in maybe June and give us an update on how that's proceeding, so that we can make sure that we get off to a good start next September.
May I say one thing on that?
Yeah.
Seeing that site council tonight, CDM seeing the PS site council, in your remarks, Mr. Walker, when site councils started, we always had PTOs, we never had site councils. It was really difficult in the beginning years of site councils. Where do you fit? What's your goal? How are you going to contribute to the school? And so CDM, working with John and myself and the principals, we're, we're into that stage of the life of the diversity groups. Find your place in the school, be able to make, but I want to tell you, when site councils started, it was the same formative years, the same growing years, until they found their place, and now they're an integral part of the school.
And I, I just have a follow-up question. Perhaps, I don't think it needs to be presented to us, but you could email us that charter that you're talking about for each of the, for the site council, I mean, for the diversity committees, please.
We will, thank you.
Okay, two more questions and a compliment. Onto the SAT scores.
Can't find the sheet, John.
So you look at the SAT scores for math. The good, the good news is that particularly for Asian students between 2011, 2012, and 2012, 2013, for both Asian students and black African-American students, there was a pretty significant increase statistically, so that's good. Seems to be a big gap, though, between both black African-Americans and Asians, and black African-Americans and whites. Any insight on, as to why that is? Is that a symptom of the achievement gap, or is there some other explanation for that?
I'm not sure what, what you're referring to, what slide.
Well, if you look at, if you look at the average scores.
In math.
In math, for Asians and for whites, there's quite a gap between those average scores and the scores for African-American, black African-Americans. So the question is, is, is there an explanation for that, or what, what, what do we think the reason is for?
I, I think generally speaking, that data is consistent across the state and across the country. I think that's why the proficiency gap is a, an advancement budget priority for the district, one of three. And I think that I wouldn't be able to answer exactly why that that proficiency gap exists in, in one simple answer, as to why that exists in the Milton Public Schools for those students, other than to say that there are a lot of layers to why there are students who achieve and those who don't, not just around their minority status, around low income, around language barriers, et cetera. So in particular, to that chart, we have students that we target for support, so we recognize this as a liability, we recognize- We recognize this as a gap. Dr. Spalding spoke very specifically to it tonight. And so when we look at why students aren't achieving, African-American in particular, I think that as we peel back each student, which is the level that we do drill this issue down to, there are a lot of other issues that go on than just the color of someone's skin as to why they don't achieve. And so I think that the work that's being done in Milton, in the data that's being discussed and the conversations that are being had, in the data that you're provided in a report like this is a, a very big step as to figuring out what it looks like in Milton and what we can do for our students who are minority students, in particular African-American, Black. So I don't know the answer as to the why. I can tell you that it's a challenge that we openly and aggressively take on and have done so with budget and curriculum and professional development. And so that could be the only answer that I could give you in, in a short time.
So could I assume that the, the attention that we're paying to early literacy and the proficiency gap and improving science performance should over time also manifest itself in improved SAT scores?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Okay. Good.
For all students.
For all students, right. Okay. The compliment, which I made before, but I thought I should make again, is at the other end, so the high performers, the AP students, if you look at the chart which shows the percent of qualifying test scores out of the number of tests taken, there's almost complete parity, which is great. So congratulations. Not sure why the, I guess that says that high performers are high performers and there's much more parity there. But that's a, that's a good news story. And if there's anything that we can take away from that and use, that would be great. But congratulations, that's exactly where we want to end up.
Yeah, Calculus Project will drive those numbers.
Great.
Can I also make a point on that? That one of the things, so that's one of the places that we've paid some attention, a lot of attention to over the last, I don't know, five, six years. And I think that that's an indication that where we focus, we get success.
And is that a, is that a collective we? Who is we?
I would say we in, with the, the schools, because I think
And the High School Diversity Committee.
And the High School Diversity Committee. We've talked about that issue a number of years ago. You would not have seen this parity. You would not have seen as many children of color taking the test. The, I think CDM raised that as an issue. The school opened up the AP courses for children to take, you know, so there was a change in policy. And we're beginning to see the benefits of those types of things. And so I think, once again, it brings back that notion about where we focus, we can have great success. And I think that that isn't one of the places that we've had that success.
Do you agree with that?
Yes, but I have, I, I would have taken the mic. We have to give credit where credit is due. In a lot of communities, and in this community, to enter into an advanced placement, you had to be signed off by the sending teacher. And Dr. Mary Grasser O'Neill, when she was superintendent, she opened up the advanced placement courses. And we worked with experts. And I remember had a strategic plan and there was, met with a lot of resistance because from teachers, from other parents, you're opening up the advanced placement courses to the teachers. And now I'm proud to say it's the culture of Milton High School. And every, as I, my analogy, that I'm not trying to be flip, is that it has to be the culture and it has to begin in the middle school. I, I can speak of my own nieces and nephews. You don't wake up in the 11th grade and sign into an advanced placement. This Calculus Project and going down to the middle school and talking about advanced placement and having that the end game, and, and again, it's not for everyone, but high achievement is really the goal for everyone. So I, I would be remiss if I didn't say Citizens for Diverse Milton and the Milton Public Schools, but that was a huge change of course for the Milton Public Schools years ago. And it exists in other districts. You see the data about the number of AP offerings. The school committee has remained committed to that and the enrollment going up. We've had an org, a national organization come in here and wanted to study how our AP enrollment and scores are successful and why our AP enrollment is so diverse.
I'll congratulate
But you open it up into all children, into all families, and that's the response you'll get.
Congratulations.
To the families.
Another Milton, another Milton success story of which there are many.
To the families and the children.
Okay. My final question.
A quick footnote on that, not to rain on the parade, but the, while the test scores are equivalent pretty much across the groups, I believe, if my math is right, that the, that students of color are still underrepresented within, as, within the classes. So while there's progress definitely being made in, through opening up the courses and all that, we're still looking to get representation
More children and relatives.
That's proportional.
Right.
And I E. the Calculus Project.
So we've, we've opened, there's open enrollment for the courses, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So anyone who wants to take the course can take the course. So I, I'm not, what's, what's your point, Chris? I'm not sure I'm getting your point there. They're underrepresented, but what, how do we solve that problem? If, if we say anyone who wants to take the test can take the test, what else, what else could we do, should we do?
Well, I think the Calculus Project is probably one response to that, but, but to give credit to the diversity committee at Milton High, which included students, and still does, the, a lot of the work of that committee was driven by students of color attending the meeting and saying, you know, I'm in the AP course, but I'm the only person of color in that course. And I have friends who were interested in taking the course who were not encouraged to do so. And I have, and there were actually students of color who said that they were discouraged, that it was going to be too hard, who then went on and took and succeeded in the course. So, you know, one issue that we haven't gotten into and that I just briefly mentioned is professional development. Teachers' expectations have a lot to do with student performance. That's well documented. And it, I think it is related to the issue of the, one of the things that, that is related to the issue of the number of students of color in the AP courses.
And it makes me think of the guidance counselors also. I'm not quite sure how much training and diversity training they get, but they are important to the, the children when they're making choices of which classes to take. We talk about the teachers and I'm, I'm just not sure how much the guidance counselors are involved with their professional training too.
I have, I would be, I, I can speak up about issues that we have. The guidance counselors at Milton High School sit down with families and they're very, very encouraging and set students up to succeed. And we're going to have more professional development as a result of our new contract, again, with a lot of different areas vying for that time. But I would have to say, you would expect me to, but I live here at Milton High School and the expectations are high for all students. And so, you know, I don't, and I haven't worked and been called to the attention of a teacher that doesn't want every child to maximize their experience. So, you know, if, if there's a story, then I would expect the principal out of the site council to sit down, to research that, to bring that teacher in, even if there's one student who felt that way. And so we'll research that.
Well, it, I mean, it came up and the committee did address it and I think the administration did address it. I doubt that that eliminated the problem. It might be an interesting topic for a student survey.
Before, I, I'd have to, I'd have to take, I'd have to hear more specific data before I go down that road. I'm, I'm, I'm of the same mind that the superintendent is on this. I, I, I don't think in general we have a problem where teachers aren't encouraging students or that guidance counselors aren't encouraging students. So if, if you think that's a problem that we need to address, then I need much more specific information, because I, I don't, I, I think it's quite the contrary. Okay, let me move on. My last question, and this actually is similar to the question Ms. Bagley-Jones asked. So we have the athletic data for one year, which is good. And it, it looks good. I don't really have the frame of reference, but it would be helpful if you could supplement that with, as you did with the other data, three years of data rather than a single year of data. And I'd be interested in how that looks by sport. I think that might be a little more instructive. So thanks. This is, as I said, a data-rich report and I think it's very helpful.
Just to comment on that, I think that, that last year was the first year they started collecting that data.
Tracking that.
Right. I think that, that was something that we had asked for and, and that's why we only have one-year data.
Okay. Well, by sport might also be interesting. Okay. Thanks.
I look through and see it. Have we done anything on clubs and activities in the same way with athletic participation?
No. We, I, I think that, that the type of data that we present now to all groups, whether it be the Citizens for Diverse Milton or the school committee, is quite cumbersome. So we actually are, in our administrative database, are creating fields for clubs for the fall, clubs for the winter, clubs for the spring, athletics, et cetera, and to hope to have a portfolio of every child so you can look back when they're a senior and know what they took each, each year. So then we can sort by what students did outside the classroom to be able to, you know, analyze who's doing what, who's engaged in what type of activity. So that is a, a work in progress. And we do hope that with the advancement 2.0 budget, that that part-time data specialist will be part of how we will organize and input and complete that work, because these are many different groups kind of doing that type of work. And in relation to data, because Chris and I have talked a lot about data and the group and I have talked a lot about data, and for the last two or three years, we've really used data as the central focus of our, by year, our two, two-a-year meetings. And, and I think that the data is just a great way to start. It's, it doesn't have any opinion, it doesn't have anything other than the numbers. And I think it's been a great way for us to center conversation and create ways to talk about things that are really hard to talk about, but when you use numbers, we, I think we've been able to have some really nice conversations. And, and in particular, I'd like to thank Dr. Spalding for last year introducing the, the framework that's based, in rooted in some research that she did when we present our information in this manner. I mean, I would, I would really challenge to see if any other district is actually measuring the achievement gap for students of minority status, special education and low income to this level of detail on an annual basis at every single grade level. So we are measuring the achievement gap in the strides that we're making for our students related in comparison to themselves, to the state, but more importantly, to the peers that they sit next to who may be a white versus non-white. So this, this type of data and this type of work and this type of focus, I hope speaks volumes to the priority that the district is making sure that as we do the work each day in the Milton Public Schools, that we are looking at what that means for every single child in the Milton Public Schools. So the data is a great place to be and it's great work to have in front of the groups that we meet with, especially when we meet with CDM a couple of times a year.
We agree.
I also just want to add that this document that we're referencing here tonight is on the website and it's dated October 9th, I believe, for, because that's when it was initially presented. So for anyone at home that's watching and wants to, check it out. Mr. Zulus?
I just want to hearken back just for a moment to the discussion about the, the success that Tucker had with respect to staffing and teacher staffing. If you look at the data, there, there is a disparity at Colicott on the elementary level, at Colicott, Cunningham and Glover on the one hand and Tucker on the other hand. Now, it may be coincidence, it may be statistically irrelevant, but I think given that disparity it does merit some review and some further consideration.
Anything else?
The only thing is that we met last night to prepare for this meeting. So we really want to thank the school committee for engaging in this discussion. We really appreciate this because we know that you don't have these kinds of discussions with a lot of groups. That keeps all of us engaged because, as Mary said, we've all been doing this work for a long time in partnership with the superintendent and the assistant superintendent. We think that there are a lot of great things that are happening in the schools. And so this is an opportunity to raise that up, but also to look at how we can be better. So we do appreciate your work on this and we wanted to publicly thank you for that. We also want to thank you for paying attention to the proficiency gap. You know, putting the budget behind it is a critical piece and we believe that that's going to make tremendous difference. And so we thank you for your leadership on this and the opportunity to speak with you tonight.
Thanks.
Great. Thank you.
Next, I put in front of you the FY 14-15 school calendar. And ask you for a vote tonight. We're starting to get calls at central office on the calendar. And I would bring your attention to one issue. Next year with that professional development days, member Mary Kelly had a work commit, commitment tonight. But we had tried this year, member Kelly had said sometimes when parents and guardians have different days off, we changed the early release days. I have feedback from parents already that they would rather it on the same day. They'd rather, even if it's a workday, they'd rather be able to count on always Wednesdays days that the half-days will be on. So we haven't even gotten into the half-days yet and we have feedback already. The public responded very positively to the professional development. I forwarded any emails, positive and negative, to you. And I would ask you to approve this calendar so that we could get it out. Families make plans around their vacations and their summer daycare issues and they're looking for this calendar now in January for the 14-15 school year.
So Ms. Gormley, I would just ask that under draft, it says January 14th. If we could put tonight's date on it?
Good.
Please.
And I would ask you to vote that calendar and pass it.
Any further comments about this? I had just a little one, but that dark purple is kind of hard to read.
Yeah.
If that's what's going out, maybe there's another color that's a little easier for parents to read.
That's a good point.
Sorry.
No problem.
So no further comments? And all in favor of approving this calendar as written?
Yes.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you.
And just to wind up with happenings, I'd like Mr. Phelan to talk to kindergarten information the other night and how parents who weren't able to attend or haven't registered and what's coming up with registration.
Sure. Do you want to talk about grade one, two?
Would you? Very important.
So we'd like to thank Laurie Dunn and Jane Barrett in central office for putting together the full-day kindergarten parent night last Thursday here at the high school in the Charles Winchester Auditorium. Over 300 parents, over three to 400 parents showed up. Lynda Lee Sheridan, the chairman of the school committee, came to address the parents. We are very excited to engage in a 13-year relationship with 310 more students. We had over 300 students pre-enrolled online. All of those families were sent a video of what it looks like to be in kindergarten. It's about a half an hour long that was produced by Ada Rose Marin and our kindergarten teachers across the district. And they also received a PowerPoint beforehand so they could see and anticipate the information being presented and ask questions. So it was a very exciting night from the nurse speaking about ensuring parents that their children will be taken care of, to the superintendent welcoming, welcoming them along with member Sheridan, to Pam Dorsey talking about after-school care. So we are excited to say that they'll be registering in February. So we are excited to say that they'll be registering in February, and they have appointments already booked. All 300 parents are booked and ready to be signed up, and those assignments will be going out at the end of April jointly.
Before you move on, could I just say Becky Padera was there as well for that night?
Oh, I'm sorry.
And if you hear the little chatter of the peanut gallery over here, that's what's going on.
Remember Padera was there?
She was there.
And it was a vital point in the night, and it was...
All nights, right up front.
I just want to say, I just want to say one other...
And her presence there, for me speaking, created a sense of confidence and support that I can only say out loud was incredible, and I felt it that night.
She was cheering you on.
Yeah, she was.
But just one other thing. As an anecdote of having, having been there and just hearing all the parents as they came in, they're so appreciative of this process and really felt informed. I mean, you get this, this gets better every year. When I feel like it can't get better, it just gets better because they walked in that night exactly, Ms. Gormly. The energy was unbelievable, and the parents were so excited. They came knowing, you know, already having seen the video and all those things that you're talking about. So I just want to congratulate everyone that had a role in that process because that's a very trying time for parents, and you're just making it such a pleasant experience, and it was great.
Thank you very much. It was a very fun night, and we look forward to the process for our kindergarten folks. Grade one is coming along as well. We had our final meeting yesterday with the principals on Monday night. Just to preview, all existing kindergarten parents will receive an email from me stating that each school building will have their own individual school-based grade-one night, which will happen on February 12 at 7:00 PM at each school. And Monday night, we'll send out that RSVP to all of our current kindergarten parents. And then after that, we'll be sending out one video per night that outlines both the curriculums that we offer and programs that we offer in the Milton Public Schools, which is our Innovation Pathway. We have a video about how do you learn math and French, how to learn math in English, Readers Workshop in French, Readers Workshop in English, the technology that we offer, the robotics that we do. And each one of those is about a minute and a half segment with children doing the work where parents can actually see and, and get a feel for what it looks like in a classroom. And we also would send out at the end of that series of PR videos, the PowerPoint that they will all be presented on the night of the 12th, so they have it in advance again to be able to read through, think about, and prepare any questions that they may have. So we're very, very happy that we can offer that night at each of the schools. It's nice for the parents to go to their school to hear this conversation or presentation about their school child moving from kindergarten to first grade. And we should all be very thankful that in a town like Milton, there are choices in first grade. It's not just you go from kindergarten to first grade. You get the choice between two very exciting programs that have great pathways for students to, to take on in the French program and/or the Innovation Pathway program. So we're, we're very lucky and very excited and very proud to, to show parents what that looks like and what that means for their children's choice.
I have to compliment John because talking about the technology and flipping the classroom, he's flipped the classroom for the kindergarten and first grade. And so now the parents come in having seen the presentation, and my observation is there were so few questions, and people were so excited that night coming in. We asked how many returning parents. I was so surprised how many parents of new, they have no siblings in the Milton Public Schools. And then flipping the classroom for the first grade, very, very exciting.
I was a little nervous that there wasn't as many questions, but with Becky Padera behind me, I felt fine. I felt supported, and I knew that it would be okay. Just want to make sure.
For the 13th term?
And Ms. Padera was at the kindergarten on the 28th.
And not to make this all about Becky Padera, school committee member Becky Padera, on my happenings, do you want to share? I was going to mention what was happening tonight at the Tucker, I believe you were there?
Yes, I was.
So maybe you'll share that part of happenings?
That's why I was late, is the Growth and Development Night for all fifth-grade parents, which was, made me feel a little bit bad for our, you know, Mr. Pavlichek budget talks because really, you know, you had come tonight to Tucker, you would have had a packed audience with Growth and Development. We had a new video this year, from what I've been told. This is my first time going through this with the fifth grade, my first fifth-grader. But they have a new video which is very updated, including new haircuts and new clothes that aren't from the 70s, so it was very modern. And Dr., the...
Adora.
Was fantastic, really relayed a lot of confidence, and, you know, I think most of the people next to me were just saying the same thing, that we felt very confident in her. And they will be giving presentations in February to fifth-grade girls and boys separately with this new video, and she will be giving the presentation along with the school nurse for the building. And it's, they handled questions, kind of tough questions, very well, and gave some recommendations for materials you could, you know, go over with your child before the video, which is helpful. So I thought it was handled very, very well.
Good attendance?
Very, very good. Packed, packed room, packed.
Run by our school nurses and our school doctors.
Yes, they did a very, very great job.
Very briefly, as the hour's getting late, you heard about the event at Pierce this coming Saturday. Also, we could turn this too over to Becky Padera.
We've all, we've all learned it really is old.
Well, she was at, the Milton High School Robotics Team hosts the statewide robotics competition, and you have to see it to believe it. All of these teams of high school students arrive on Saturday, they create, well, you met the robot last year. He came here or she came here. And they create the robot, and they compete. And so Ms. Padera and I doing the registration, and then I would encourage the viewing audience. We'll put it on the web. A little secret, the best time to come is when the robots are made, and they're all competing against one another. That's at the Cunningham-Collicott Cafeteria all day Sunday. And I want to recognize John Diamond, Milton High School chemistry teacher, big shoes to fill when Marilyn Deco was hosting that and then got her statewide position. He has ably taken it over with the community, and I want to recognize everyone for helping.
So on that point, we, I should say, Ms. Padera is her own best PR person, but every once in a while, she does do something worthy of note.
Oh, this is a little intervention here?
Through her MIT connections, one of the middle school science teachers and I were able to join her at MIT for the International Robotics Competition, where all of the competition occurred on the International Space Station. It was unbelievable. So I'm hooked, and thanks to Ms. Padera, it was a pretty exciting day, but just unbelievable to watch and to experience. So we were there in the auditorium, but the kids were watching their projects perform on the International Space Station in real time.
Yeah, it's amazing.
Sorry I missed that morning. That was a longstanding invitation. I appreciate both of you, and David, Romeo are going. So every school committee member takes what their discipline is and advocates. So Becky Padera is advocating for robotics in the curriculum and after-school, but coming up with ideas to help us get involved, finding the funding, and robotics has gone from zero to 100 miles an hour integrated into the Milton Public Schools. And that Saturday, to see that high school robotics club, it makes you believe in the potential. And just on this whole robotics, and I promise I'll stop. That STEM program last year that was implemented into the first grade and now the second grade, and we should give you an update. I shared with a few school committee members, and I sent you the clip today. I wish that we had put it up for you. Two parents who publicly recognize at the next meeting have begun a, invited a all-girls STEM at the Glover After-School Club. And so they greeted you this morning from Channel 5. They were at the Channel 5 studio this weekend, and they were the greeting on Channel 5 at 5:00 or 5:30 this morning. And I said to everyone today, having STEM and recognizing those young women at first and second grade is like putting a tennis club in a kindergarten, a five-year-old's hand, and giving them tennis lessons their whole life. And so this robotics...
Tennis racket, by the way.
Tennis racket. Did I say tennis?
Tennis club.
Yeah.
She's not going to lie.
I'd say I'm not going to lie, please.
She obviously doesn't play tennis, but...
It's not about me, though. So, so I have to tell you, this robotics and the STEM initiatives will change lives. So I appreciate you lobbying and championing robotics K through 12.
Well, I will have a video next week on Zero Robotics. I wasn't, wasn't sure what time everybody would be wrapping up, but I didn't want, you know, definitely wanted the students to be here when I showed the Zero Robotics video. And just so you know, because especially since Glenn's listening, Zero Robotics stands for zero gravity, because you're on the space station, and zero cost. So there's double zero there. But I also, on the, the issue of science, I don't know if you were going to bring it up, but the Glover did have a science fair that was jam-packed as well. Last week, they, they didn't know what to do with the many, many kids that came in with their science projects, and so I think that next year they're going to have to burn it, moon it, and plant it, and I think, along with a parent, I believe, and I think they're going to have to split the grades just because they had too much participation.
So to that point, on January 30th, Collicott's having their science fair, Cunningham's having a science fair, Tucker, the 23rd, and Glover had theirs on January 14th. So we have seen, again, that awareness, involvement in science, and Pierce is having a science...
Can you make sure we know about those in advance?
Yes. We're going to get back to being better on that.
And just one more thing about the robotics this weekend. I'm sorry, Mary, I slipped my mind, is it Saturday or Sunday?
Sunday.
It's Sunday. It's all day, but it's...
Collicott, Cunningham.
At, yeah, it's in the gym.
Cafeteria.
The cafeteria, but the gym is where the, they're setting up as well. But it's good to walk around early and talk to the different schools and talk to them about what they're, they're very happy to tell you about it. And it's, it's, it is a really exciting thing, and we might, Milton Government, Milton Cable TV might be there filming it. Mr. Lynch said he was going to try to get over there, so it might be able to be shared later on cable, but I welcome everybody. The kids are really excited to talk to you about their robots and...
What time does that start pecking?
It starts, I think the competition starts around 9:00 or 10:00 because the registration's early, which I'm going to be joining Mrs. Gormly a little bit late for because my daughter is assuming, but the competition itself, I think, starts around 10:00. Does that sound right?
I'll send it out to all the school committee, and we'll put it on the web tomorrow.
I was just going to say the website, too. Thank you, Ms. Gormly.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Yes, I'd like to turn over the last item that I skipped, the technology plan, to Mr. Phelan.
Sure. The school committee has a memo in their packet addressed to Superintendent Gormly from Bob Patterson, the Director of Technology, in relation to what used to be the annual technology submission to the state. The state has changed the, the expectation and the policy for districts, so we would no longer have to vote this technology update. But I wanted to bring this to the attention of the school committee so they would know why they wouldn't be voting it each year. So essentially, there are three components to what the state expects now for every district to provide feedback and data to the state, and it is a long-range district technology plan, which we have already submitted last year that goes through 2015, to fill it out a digital learning survey, which the state has not produced yet, so when they do produce that and give it to the districts, we will fill it out and return it. And each district is responsible to submit information regarding PAC, technology readiness, and we have already provided that data to the state. So we are in compliance with the state expectation of technology, and we will do this each year, and maybe instead of a vote of a technology plan, we will just update at a point in the school year the status of the district in regards to its technology information to the state.
So I, I think that this is actually an opportunity, and I don't, I don't think we should wait until 2017 to figure out what our overall technology strategy is. And I'm agreeing more and more with Mr. Sheridan, who said this months ago, but the, the creation of a position that will have responsibility for talking about and, and developing our overall educational technology strategy, I think, is critical. And I'm not sure, to further complicate our budget discussions, I'm not sure the halftime position we have in there is going to be enough, but more on that later. But I, but I think this is an opportunity to actually talk about what our long-term strategy is and clarify that, and I think that's a good thing.
And I think that that discussion shouldn't happen until we bring someone on to really have, have the feet on the ground and...
Well, given that the three-year plan that we have submitted runs to the end of next year, next year will be the year that you will do the work to prepare for the following three years, so the timing is very good.
Good. Thank you for that update. Anything else on that? Okay, thank you. We no longer have anything on the chairman's report, so we'll move into finance subcommittee. Mr. Walker, if you want that as well, since Mrs. Kelly isn't here.
Yes. So on the fiscal '15 budget, we had a very good discussion earlier this week with the Warren Committee. I think that they are clearer than they were on what our priorities are and are looking for ways to help us fund those priorities. The all-day meeting is scheduled for February 8th, and so we will be there to, again, help them reach the right decisions. But I, I think we're off to a good start, thanks to Dr. Pavlichek for all the work he did in both preparing the Warren Committee for the discussion with us and answering the myriad of questions they had about the budget. But I think overall, it was work that was well worth it, and I think we're well positioned going into the all-day meeting discussion.
Thank you.
Next is fiscal '15 fees. We have good news for parents who will be coming into the FDK program. The recommendation from the finance committee and from the administration is that the fiscal '15 tuition remain at $3,700 as a fee, and I'm moving that the school committee approve that.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Do we have any further discussion around that? Thank you for the work that goes into choosing, you know, analyzing that information and coming up with the ability to maintain it. I think it's, it's really critical for families to be able to participate, so thank you. Any other comments? All in favor? Let's move on to this.
Next, you have a tool list of our capital request. You had seen these before, but we're at the point in the capital planning process where the Capital Improvements Planning Committee asked that we prioritize the request by year. So we've done that, and this was the work of, I met with Bob Patterson, Bill Ritchie, Assistant Superintendent Phelan, and then subsequently, the superintendent reviewed the recommendation. So we are all in favor. I'll say just a little bit about what we're recommending. In year one, on the technology, consistent with the school committee discussion that we had about a month and a half ago, the smart boards at Pierce are number one. Two, three, and four are replacing of the network switches and hardware at the Cunningham, Collicott, Pierce, and Glover. That's actually to catch them up. We, we fast-tracked the Tucker and the high school because they had more devices for this year, so we needed to make sure that they had that capability. And then we have actually flipped the Chromebooks in preparation for PAC, so we had those in fiscal 2016. We moved those into '15, and we moved the iPads at Assistant Superintendent Phelan's recommendation into '16. But otherwise, it's pretty straightforward. Obviously, the other priority is to try to replace about 20% of the PCs that we have each year, so we're still, still proposing to do that. And we did add the replacement of obsolete smart boards. We're at a point where the smart boards that we purchased initially are actually becoming obsolete, so we need to start thinking about replacing those, but that's in years 15, with school 15 and 16 and 17. On the facilities, these pretty much speak for itself. We have largely deferred to Bill on what the right priorities are and what the projects are, so this is essentially his prioritization, but we certainly do agree with it. So recommending, moving approval for both of these prioritized capital lists.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I have one question. So under Chromebooks?
Yep.
23, 24, and 25 line 23, 24. So you said you moved them to fiscal year '15, but they still remain on year three and fiscal year '17.
Yes, so we had, we had them in '16 and '17. We moved some of them from '16 into '15, but the ones in '17 stayed in '17.
Okay, and I guess I just would put the disclaimer out there that by 2017, we might decide that it might... decide that it might not be Chromebooks, it might be another device, or it might, you know, some iteration of that, but that there will be a dedicated purchase made for the need that fits the needs.
Correct, and Assistant Superintendent Phelan has underscored that, and I've made that clear at the capital committee. And for the purposes of town meeting, the warrant is actually going to talk about fiscal '15 primarily in the article, but.
Okay, I just.
So we will have an opportunity to revisit that before fiscal '17.
If there's just a way to put it down on the bottom, I don't know, just as a disclaimer, if possible, just a thought. Any other comments? All in favor of this motion? Thank you very much, it's unanimous. And that's it?
That's it.
Great, thank you. Next meeting agenda items? I heard a STEM update, so we'll have to build that into our calendar if we don't already have it, and I know Mrs. Padera wants to have her video, that we've been viewing them online, she and I. We're looking at an assortment, trying to fix.
Sometimes we have different opinions on, it's a cool video and what's not.
At your next meeting, you have the Cunningham Site Council?
Right.
And you have facilities update on your school committee calendar.
Right. Anything else? Okay. So at this time, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of deployment of security personnel, not to return to public session, but to adjourn directly from executive session.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Mr. Walker, second by Ms. Bagley Jones. This is a roll call vote. Ms. Bagley Jones?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Padera?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Thank you very much, and good night.